I'm going to call the special meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, October 25th, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy and Alderwoman at Large, Shoshana Kelly, will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind with justice and charity for all so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I am pledging to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, indivisible and just for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. If you're participating via Zoom, please state your presence, reason for not attending in person, and whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clea.
Here.
Alderman Moran. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Juddi.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Kelly.
I am here. I'm participating via Zoom due to illness. I am alone in this room.
Alderman Como.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'm here and I'm still recovering from COVID. Hopefully, this is my last day of isolation, so, and I am alone in the room.
Alderman Goveya.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Wilshar.
Here.
Thirteen present, two absent.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a presentation on the library facility assessment, and I'd like to recognize Library Director Jennifer McCormick.
Hi, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to present our facility assessment tonight. I'm just going to take two minutes to remind everybody how we got here and introduce you to the, our, our old lady, the NPL. The Nashville Public Library, its current building, opened in 1971. We have about 60,000 square feet of space. The only capital improvements that have been made to the building since it opened in 1971 was a new entry, that kind of glass foyer arrangement. It was put on sometime in the 90s, and I might be 1995. The roof was replaced in 2008, just a little bit before I started working here, and the west wing of the library had a renovation in 2017 to become the Chandler Wing, the Chandler Memorial Wing, where all of our meeting rooms are. And I would just like to point out that that Chandler Wing renovation was paid for with trust funds from the board's investments. We are a busy place. Before COVID, we had 240,000, 250,000 visits the fiscal year before COVID hit, and all so far this fiscal year, we've had over 50,000 visits already. So I think we are on track to meet those same numbers. For the last several years, I've brought the same capital, two or three capital improvement projects to the Capital Improvement Committee every year, repairs to the brick, and HVAC system renovation, and digital controls. We added the plaza renovation to that in last year, I think at the last Capital Improvements Committee, I said, oh, by the way, we're going to have to talk about the windows, too, because those are 50 years old. And we finally decided, rather than present those little piecemeal fixes, that we should invest in an assessment of the building, give everybody a picture of where we are and where we need to go to rescue the building. And as a point of reference, last year, we spent over $25,000 repairing the HVAC system, and our energy bills are in the vicinity of $100,000. Already this fiscal year, we spent close to $6,000 on keeping the HVAC system going. So, we went through the bid process, we hired Design Lab to do this work for us, they have been fantastic. So I'm going to introduce Ben Yootz and Andrew Shea.
Very good. Well, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Excellent. So we've got a presentation to share with you this evening. I'm Ben Yootz from Design Lab Architects. Alongside me is Andrew Shea, also with Design Lab, and we also have Keith Kelly with us from Harvey Construction. He'll be available towards the end of the presentation if there's any questions. So I think we have about half an hour. We're going to try to get through all of this as efficiently as we can. We do have a lot of information to share with you all. So in the interest of time, I'll move through it all, and then we can do questions and answers at the end, if that works for everyone. So on the next slide here, this is our sort of agenda for the evening. I'll introduce our team a little bit more. We'll talk about the existing building, what we've been up to, what our goals have been, and our process to date, and then we'll get into the bulk of our presentation, the assessment of the building, and the summary of needs. And we'll go through that sort of by engineering discipline. We'll talk about architecture, we'll talk about building code and accessibility issues, talk about building systems, and we'll kind of go through that system by system. And then, once we identify all of those needs, we'll go through a proposed vision and associated cost estimate on what this might entail moving forward. So to get going here, we'll click forward and talk a little bit more about our team. I can go one more ahead, please. So there's been a handful of us from Design Lab, myself and Andrew included, and we do have a consultant team that has been helping us along the way. I mentioned Harvey Construction providing cost consultant services. We also have an engineering team and a code envelope, an envelope team and a code and accessibility consultant as well. A little bit more about Design Lab on the next slide. We're about a 15 to 20-person studio, architecture studio in Boston. We're focused predominantly in the cultural arts for municipality and cities like Nashua, as well as higher ed clients. If you can click forward, you'll see a little bit of our library experience. We've just completed last summer a master plan for the Boston Public Library. We've done work for the Providence Public Library down in Rhode Island, and the West Branch Library in Somerville. That's some of our sort of city and municipality library work, and then we've also done work for higher ed institutions, too, including University of Connecticut and the University of Massachusetts. On the next slide, you know, through our work, we've also become very well-versed in mid-century buildings, much like your Nashua Library, buildings built in the 50s, 60s, and 70s. These are some of the buildings that we've worked on over the years. And on the next slide, you'll see, you know, through that experience, we've gained a lot of technical knowledge about the construction systems, the techniques used in these, in this era of building, and some of the challenges that they present. Click forward, please. As I mentioned, we have RFS engineers on our team. They've provided consulting services for mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection. Their office is up in Laconia. We've worked with them on a number of projects, including that Providence Public Library project I mentioned, and they also have an office down in Boston, and we're often collaborating with them. On the next slide, a little bit about our envelope consultant, Building Enclosures Associates. They helped us assess the building envelope for the library. They've done some exploratory work, which we'll talk about, and they're very well-versed working with this vintage of building as well. And then, as I mentioned, we have Harvey Construction on our team, sort of a trusted regional contractor and construction manager who knows the local markets very well, and they've been very beneficial to have on our team from a cost estimating perspective. So that's our team. In terms of the existing building, you can click forward. Jen did a great job giving you the quick summary. I won't dwell on this, but it's around 60,000 square feet, built in 1971, opened in '72, I think. And as Jen mentioned, very busy, a lot of materials in terms of library collection come and go, there's a lot of visitors, but there hasn't been much capital improvements over the years. Click forward, please. So in terms of our project goals, you can click forward. Thank you. This is what we were tasked with doing, a complete assessment of the existing building, all of those components that you see out there, and then develop a comprehensive report and share all of that information with all of you. We presented to the library trustees a couple weeks ago. We're here in front of you all this evening, and we'll be finalizing the printed report to hand over to Jen here in the next week or so. So in terms of our process, we really began on the next slide in earnest back in May, and we dug into all of the available information that the city and the library had for us, original drawings, original meeting minutes from the construction of any of the renovations that happened over the years. We took a look at the strategic plan that was recently completed, and that was sort of the foundation of our assessment, all of that, all of that information. We also, on the next slide, conducted a series of site visits over the summer months, in June, July, and into August. We had dedicated tours with our consultants, looking at the building systems, looking at the envelope, looking at accessibility issues, and then we did some exploratory work in August as well. So if you click forward, this is where we are in the process, that sort of blue bar in our conclusion. We're just wrapped up about six weeks of cost estimating effort with Keith and his team. We presented to the trustees a couple weeks ago, as I said, and we're looking to put a bow on this at the end of the month. So in terms of a general overview on the next slide, as I said, the building's 50 years old, and that, you know, there's a lot of, you know, changes that have happened in the past 50 years in terms of building codes, in terms of energy codes. They've all evolved dramatically from when the building was constructed, and, you know, I want to say that because, you know, there's a lot of buildings out there from this vintage, and a lot of buildings that face the challenges that you all are, are going to be grappling here with on how to modernize this building. But you're not alone. It's, it's a very common, commonplace to be in, and, you know, buildings, we like to say we build them for 50 years, and at that point, you know, the, the systems within them have reached their lifespan. It's time to think about modernization, and I think that's, that's where we're at with this building. Thermally, the building does not perform very well. There's a lot of thermal bridging that, as, as we talked about, where, you know, the concrete that you see on the outside of the building is the same concrete that you see on the inside of the building. It's the structural system of the building, and that is a very big thermal conductor. It's like a big radiator. All of that cold air in the winter comes through that concrete in the, in the winter, and vice versa in the summertime, and that's something that we are seeking to hopefully address. You know, all of that's to say, you know, the building is, is, is 50 years old, it does need modernization. A lot of the systems are at or past their useful life, but I want to pause and just, you know, take, take a minute to say all the wonderful things that the library is doing. As Jen said, it's a, it's a civic feature within this wonderful community. It's got a wonderful series of outreach and programs for the community, and the programming that happens within it is really serving the community well, and it's, I think there's a real opportunity to bring the building up with all of that great program work to really be the sort of civic feature within the community. Looking at the architecture quickly, you know, our charge wasn't really to focus on library programming, but more on the building systems and needs. Excuse me. But we couldn't help it, after visiting the building a number of times, to kind of make some high-level observations about potential architectural improvements, one of which is improving first impressions. So if you click forward, you know, it's fair to say, even though the library did get a new entrance, you know, 20 years ago or 15 years ago or so, it's not the most welcoming first impression. It certainly screams, you know, mid-century architecture of the 70s. It's very representative of that time, and, you know, is there an opportunity to, to create a new first impression, both outside the building and then when you move forward on the next slide? Oops, excuse me. Sorry. Before we go, inside photos, I think what you all have started to do with this, you know, landscape improvement strategy and thinking about a new park and entrance sequence is, is wonderful. It's a great first step. It's going to have a huge impact on the exterior character of that space and what it can do for the community. And starting to think about how can you take some of that wonderful energy and that sort of revitalized space and pull that inside on the next slide is something that we think is worth thinking about. We also think there's opportunities to improve connectivity within the building, perhaps with new openings between the first main level that you enter on to that lower level. You know, as, as first or second or third visit patrons, you still really don't understand what happens elsewhere in the library, and we think introducing a new stair could potentially really improve that with visual connections right down to the lower level, so you know that it's there and you know what program exists. That's a similar strategy. If you click forward, sorry, one more slide, please, that we did at the Providence Public Library, if you, sorry, click backwards. This is an existing condition of the Providence Public Library. It looks pretty similar. I don't know if you can go backwards or not. Yeah, thank you. This is, looks very similar, kind of in vintage to what you all have here, but this was a Providence Public Library, and through inserting a new stair, as you see on the next slide, same spaces, but with new materials, it really kind of dramatically changed the perception of that, of that space. Click forward. We think there's opportunity to refresh the library program spaces as well. We didn't really get into, you know, is a children's space large enough? Is a teen's space large enough? Is a collection space not large enough? We didn't, weren't really charged with doing that, but we think, just thinking about refreshing some of those spaces with new finishes, new lighting, new graphics, and would go, would go a long way. And then, lastly, before we move into some of the nitty-gritty building system stuff, you know, the fact that this building sits so prominently along the river and hopefully the future Riverwalk, I think is a huge opportunity, and the way that this building could engage that Riverwalk on, on sort of what is now the backside of the library could be really powerful. And we don't really know what exactly that is yet, but, you know, it, it does sit very prominently, it's sort of centered on this sort of sequence of Riverwalk pieces, and it could be really wonderful to have this wonderful revitalized civic amenity right on that, on that walkway. And then here on the next slide, those are some of the views that you see. The image on the left is actually from the roof, but there's these wonderful vistas of the river that probably were not so wonderful back in the 70s when it was built, but now that the Riverwalk is being sort of transformed, hopefully, you know, can the library reposition itself in a new way is something that we thought should, should bring to the table. So Andrew's going to talk through here some of the building code and accessibility challenges and envelope and building systems, and then, and then I'll come back and talk through the kind of vision and cost estimate.
If you could go to the next slide. We're going to run through this, these sections pretty fast, just more of a general overview. Kind of what we're showing here is, you know, with kind of larger scale renovations, like we're proposing for this, there are certain triggers that are triggered with accessibility and changes you need to make within the building. Next slide. So with the exterior, you know, a couple accessibility issues. Sidewalks do not have adequate railings, no accessibility from the lower level. Next slide. Interior, kind of a couple major things. Restrooms are not accessible kind of on both levels. Bookshelf files are, do not have adequate clearances.
To maybe just talk a little bit more about the restrooms. So the restrooms are challenging in that they don't meet accessibility requirements. And again, you know, there was no accessibility code that when this building was built, so it's not uncommon to be facing these challenges where you have existing conditions that don't meet current codes, but, you know, they're, they're too small in terms of accessibility maneuver, maneuverability, but there's also not enough of them to meet the occupant load of the building. So that's, that's kind of a two-part challenge with the way that restrooms work thermally.
Next slide. So kind of hand-in-hand with accessibility, we do have some life safety concerns, too, within the building. The entire building does not have a sprinkler system in it, except in the boiler room, which was added a couple years ago. The north stair has multiple issues with how it discharges out of the building. Stairways have non-compliant handrails. So kind of a multitude of issues throughout the entire structure. Next slide. So some recommendations, kind of what I was touching on, new handrails throughout, accessible routes on the exterior. Restrooms would need to be reconfigured to allow for adequate clearances, fixture counts. North stair would need a couple changes made to it in order to be compliant. If you go to the next slide. So that was kind of accessibility and life safety. So with building envelope, next slide. Overall, the exterior of the building is in relatively good condition with some small issues, some cracks, spalls on the concrete. Masonry is in good condition, some cracking, you can't really see it on those photos. If you go to the next slide, what we did with our envelope consultant is a couple exploratory test cuts in some of these bump outs. So there's recurring leakage happening in a lot of these, which is leading to mold growth, paint chipping. So what we found was, you could kind of see the black section in that opening right there was found to be discontinuous in a couple of these bays, which is kind of what we identified as the leakage point.
So that was, that was through wall flashing that was intended to be continuous behind the masonry veneer, and it is not. So any water that gets through the brick hits this, you know, waterproofing membrane to the flashing and can get past the flashing because it's not continuous. So that was kind of a smoking gun, if you will, to some of the water infiltration issues that we see in the building.
Next slide. Fenestrations is a fancy word for just window openings. So most of these are original to the building. Most are single-pane steel construction, which, as Ben mentioned, with thermal bridging is direct inside to outside with heat loss. The entrance is newer, is, does have firmly broken frames, kind of to deal with, you know, insulation, and doors and frames are mostly original for the building.
And I think, just to pause and look at that upper right photo for a minute, I mean, that's sort of a wonderfully simple detail back in the 70s where the glass abuts the concrete and then abuts the brick, but it's, it's sort of fraught with issues in terms of how you flash that and just the thermal properties of that. It's, it's very, it's very weak thermally. A lot of, of, you know, temperature change can be transmitted through those surfaces and through the single-pane glass with the metal sashes. So that's kind of, in a nutshell, you know, illustrating a lot of, a lot of the challenges that were bringing to your attention.
Next slide. So the roof is in good condition. It's approximately 10 to 15 years old, was replaced in that time period. The projected bays, what we were talking about with the leakage, kind of have a fluid-applied coating on them. Next slide. So kind of with kind of all these systems, most of them are past their useful life. All the windows do need to be replaced. Roofing is due for replacement in the near term, just because it is starting to approach the end of its useful life. There are, we'll show some, some suggestions later in the presentation about adding a PV system, which would require a new roof to go on it, once that's on. Next slide. The brick, the flashings would need to be repaired. Kind of, this is kind of a typical condition around the entire building. Cracks would need to be filled. Increasing the thermal performance of the building is a suggestion, and if you go to the next slide, overcladding, just the idea of adding the secondary facade over the existing, which would, you know, create a new thermal barrier for the building, address the leakage concerns.
So that's, I just want to pause there for a minute as well. It's, it's kind of a big concept, and it's just that at this point, it's a concept. It's common for buildings of this vintage. It's not that we're necessarily recommending, recommending you should do this, but it's certainly something as if this project were to advance that you should consider. And it's basically, as Andrew said, it's, it's putting a new envelope over the existing envelope. It's kind of wrapping the building in a blanket, so to speak, to really improve those thermal conditions, which can also change the building's appearance. So that's another part of this conversation, because architecturally, it has the potential, depending on what system was selected and the details and all that, to, to really alter the appearance of the building, which some may say is a, is a good thing, others may think differently, but that's, that's part, part of the equation.
If you could go back one slide. Same, same with the concrete, this idea of overcladding, the concrete is continuous interior, the exterior, so that would also apply. If, without overcladding, repairs would need to be undertaken to cracking, spalling, exposed rebar. Two, next slide, and then next slide after that. Last section on this is building systems. If you go to the next slide. Heating, ventilation, air conditioning, kind of all these systems are past their useful life, except for the boilers, which are relatively new, but most other systems are fairly operational or, are at the end of their life. Fire protection, as we mentioned, this building does not have a sprinkler system, except in the boiler room, and no stamp pipe system throughout. Next slide. Most plumbing fixtures are original to the building, and in terms of electric, and most of the piping is nearing the end of its useful life, that kind of 60-year range. Electrical, kind of the major component of this is most of the rooms do not have adequate clearances, which is a safety hazard for anyone working in there, and most of the switchgear is relatively old and would need to be replaced. Next slide. Lighting is mostly original to the building, except for the 2017 renovation on the lower level. Fire alarm systems are past their useful life, and with IT, most of the library is covered with wireless access. Next slide. So basically, with a lot of these, most of these would need replacing. Air handler units, electric systems, switching those, the hot water systems for energy efficiency, adding a sprinkler system throughout the building, and plumbing upgrading all fixtures, hand-in-hand with rearranging the restrooms. Next slide. Electrical, same thing, replacement, full lighting upgrades, and a new fire alarm system throughout.
Okay, so I know that was a lot. It's probably daunting to be thinking about, to put all of that forward in such a short amount of time, but I think, you know, in a nutshell, the building at this age, you know, 50, 50 years since it was built is, is sort of ripe for, you know, a significant renovation and modernization effort. I'll talk through a little bit more about a potential project timeline and what you all might expect moving forward before we share any information on, on estimated costs. So if you could click forward, so, yeah, so we're, you know, we're sort of here. We just completed a building assessment, and Jen and her team just completed a strategic plan. You know, and those two efforts together can really start to establish the framework of a project. So moving forward, if you could click forward one slide, you know, these are the, these are the traditional design phases, if you will. These are probably familiar to some of you. There's usually a programming and concept design phase, followed by schematic design, design development, and then construction documents. You know, we're not to any of that yet. We're just kind of identifying the needs and helping to establish the framework for what could be a project, and I'll talk about more about what that framework is. And then beyond that, one more slide, you know, there's ample opportunity for community and stakeholder input along the way, from all of you, from community members, you know, whoever, whoever you may be interested in that effort, and then at each of those transitions from one design phase to the next, from concept to schematics, schematic to design, you know, there'll be opportunities for, for cost estimating, so that you can really tailor the project to a budget, and then vice versa. And then beyond that, of course, then you would get into construction timeframe on the next slide. So looking forward, again, before we present any costs, you know, I wanted to just share a few slides of what you might expect. So in a design processing, moving forward, you know, there'd be a, a series of workshops, a series of opportunities for engagement between a design team, whether it's us or some other team, with the library trustees, with the aldermen, with other city stakeholders, with community members, and that's a wonderful time, because that's when a lot of great ideas come to the table, and you can start to really hear from different folks and tailor a project to what, to, you know, to what's available from, from the city and others in terms of funding. During that process, you know, I borrowed this slide from RFS, but you'll be considering all sorts of different things, from an energy use perspective, from a building system perspective. You know, we've talked about a potential PV array that's of interest, and through that effort, you'll be able to go through what we call a lifecycle cost analysis, and on the next slide, you know, you'll be able to weigh these options. So you say, okay, if I invest X amount of dollars in a PV array and this type of building system, and maybe new glazing, and that improves the envelope, you'd be able to weigh all of those against the cost and the payback period of, of when you'll be able to, you know, see your return on your investment. So that's a couple things to be, you know, thinking about that are ahead of you as you start to think about a project. And then, and then on the next slide, you know, as you do that, you'll be able to identify, you know, core scope and needs, and we'll be talking about what we think are the core scope and needs, at least at this stage of the project, you know, things that must be done. We know you need a new HVAC system, you know, we know we need to increase the restroom capacity, but there may be other things that, that you want to consider. The PV array, or maybe you want to take on a new program space, or you want to do something else, a new entrance, a new stair, I'm not sure, but there are all these other things that you'll be considering along the way, and you'll be able to tailor those, you know, to a cost estimate and be able to figure out, you'll really be able to tailor your scope to the available funds. And we, you know, we call this cost modeling, or kind of a menu of options, where you can kind of pick X, Y, and Z and, and tailor the scope to it. So that's what lies ahead. So in terms of our recommended base improvements, much of this, we just kind of talked through in terms of the needs and recommendations, but we broke these into a series of three buckets, you know, building code and life safety code improvements alongside accessibility, the ADA improvements, then we talked about building improvements and, and building system improvements. So there's a lot there to kind of wrap your head around, but certainly up-modernize existing building systems, replace deficient masonry, flashings that we talked about, install a new roof, replace all existing windows, replace existing ceilings. There's, there's a lot there in terms of scope, and I can answer more specific questions if we need to, but then it's important to pair those on the next slide. So we've got base scopes in, in the blue, that's your construction cost estimate, and then alongside that, we've applied a multiplier to get a soft cost estimate. And I want to bring that up because, you know, a lot And I want to bring that up because, you know, a lot of, a lot of folks who perhaps aren't familiar with this, I'm not necessarily saying you, you all aren't, but don't think about that number. And that number is often substantial. Sometimes it's in the 30 to 40% markup of construction cost. And that gets you to a total project cost. So everything in the soft costs include escalation. We know we're dealing with that a lot in the construction industry right now. We've projected costs out to 2025 as a place to start. You know, there's moving and storage equipments, there's professional fees to be considering and all those things and that kind of pale orange color are what we have in the soft costs. And then we'll identify enhanced scope. So these are some of the sort of the optional things, right? Like if, if you want to start to consider things beyond the, the kind of core recommendations, you might consider new finishes throughout the library. You might think about some of these arrival and circulation improvements I mentioned, perhaps a new entrance, maybe rethink the stair. You may think about a new rooftop PV array. So those are some enhanced scope options that we'll talk about. And then even beyond that, there's some optional scope on the next slide. It's just sort of setting the framework. There's all of these components that you can start to piece together to establish the framework for a project. So looking at the base scope, everything you see in blue and everything that we talked through in terms of, of recommended improvements, we are anticipating a construction cost in, of 12 to 14 million. Now that's a, that's a big number and we also recognize that that's a big range. And part of that reason, which, which Keith can talk to here in a moment, is that there's a lot of unknowns. We don't know what type of mechanical system is going in the building. We don't know what type of windows are going in the building or anything like that. So that's why we have that range, because we don't want to get too pinned into a number without having gone through a design process. And then we have the multiplied soft costs on top of that. So if you get to the next slide, the sort of base project cost, direct construction cost plus soft cost, we're anticipating a number somewhere between 16 and 19 million. Now, if you click forward and think about some of that enhanced scope, that's not saying you have to take all of those things. You might just pick some, you might not pick any. But if you start to think about all those sort of bigger picture ideas that I mentioned at the beginning, you know, new finishes throughout, new entrance sequence, new stair, new rooftop TV array, that can, that obviously brings the price tag up considerably to around a 23 to potentially even a $30 million project if all of those things were taken. And then there's optional scope beyond that as well, on the next slide. But again, as I said, like the idea here is not to say you need to do all of this stuff. We do think the stuff in the base scope is, is our recommendation of the core things that, that need to be strongly considered. But the stuff in the enhanced scope and the optional scope items, that stuff that would ultimately be discussed a lot more during a design process and with more input from all of you and, and other city stakeholders. So again, just to conclude here, here's the summary of recommended base improvements, everything that's in that 12 to 14 million dollar construction cost number that we showed on the previous slide. And that's it. Did our best to stick to the 30 minutes, not bad.
Pretty good job.
But I know that was a lot. We, I, I recognize that. We just threw a lot of information at you very quickly. Happy to answer any questions. I know you all have a full agenda for the evening, but if you do have questions, feel free.
Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have two questions, if you don't mind. Why would it be cost effective just to rebuild the whole library? Did you look at that cost?
I think Keith is probably best and I want you to introduce yourself. Thank you, Keith.
Good evening, board members. My name is Keith Kelly. I'm here representing Harvey Construction. Great question. After we got to the end of this exercise, I took the numbers that we had come up with, those, the range. If you could go back just a couple of slides so that we can see kind of the summary of what we're talking about. One more. Yeah. I went back through and evaluated what those costs were. So if you were to take even the total number at the high end of this project, again, that we don't know what's in it, it's all concept and, and ideas, we would be somewhere at the tune of a maximum of $500 a square foot in construction costs. And the answer to your question is pretty much no. You could not build this building for what it is, for what it stands for, for that price. So that's kind of what we took away from it as we were putting it all together, is that if we were to look at this building, a library of this size and stature and capacity, at $500 a foot would be a, a challenge. And that's at the very high end of that. Obviously, all the numbers are less than that as you bring it down, but that's, that's where we ended up.
Alderman.
Yes, thank you. In the, the renovation process, you never mentioned any type of security or safety. And would that be added in the cost of the renovation as well?
I, I wouldn't expect it to be. That would be captured within those systems. So those systems upgrades, electrical, fire alarm, those components specific to a library function would be addressed in, in those system numbers.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, very simple question, Madam President. The presentation we saw was very good, but a lot of information. Is this going to be supplied to the clerk so that we can digest it at a later date? Thank you.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Just a quick question. I, I often learned through construction that the moment you start touching one thing, you have to bring everything else up to code, such as the ADA requirements and so on. So if we didn't do all of this, if we just said, okay, let's just work on the roof or the this or the that, would we then be required to upgrade all those other?
Yeah, it's a very good question and, and we did think about that. And it is a common challenge if you do present, approach a project in a more kind of component base, you know. Certainly if you were to substantially renovate a portion of the library, you know, say, I'm just making this up, but say the fir, the first floor children's room, you'd have to make the entirety of that space accessible and all the spaces that support it accessible. Whether or not you trigger a full, full building upgrade from an accessibility perspective, you, you have to do sort of the, the math associated with it. So you have to understand the assessed value of the building compared to construction costs. And there's a ratio that if you go beyond a certain ratio of construction cost, then you would have to modernize the entire building. And, you know, from, from our perspective, when we say base scope here, we did look at like, could you bite off smaller pieces? And you could. You could just replace the HVAC system. But when you're going in that, that much, we thought it was prudent to consider a full building approach. And full building accessibility is included in that base number.
Just more, more comment than, than question. I, I appreciate that, that answer because that, that's one of the things I think we all get caught up in is we want to take small bites and say, let's just do this and that. But as we go along, if we get to a certain point that triggers those things, if that could be flagged to let us know, you know what, you guys just pushed us to the edge that we might as well do the entire project rather than that. I'd appreciate that.
Absolutely. And we can add more clarity to that in our final deliverable to, to Jen and the library. But that's very often something that happens in the early design phases, like ultimately like you try to have that stuff figured out by schematic design so that you don't face a, a big change in scope and cost later in the design process.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman O'Brien.
Yeah. In your inspection of the building and everything, and we're going to have a lot to discuss with this project and looking at it and fine tune it and everything. But one thing you didn't mention, anything catastrophic structurally or anything else like that, that may need our immediate attention.
Short answer is no. Structurally, the building is very sound. You know, we did identify some areas where there's spalled concrete and rebar. You know, that stuff kind of looks worse than it actually is structurally. I mean, it needs to be addressed and, and so it's protected, but there aren't any major structural issues. From a, from a safety perspective, Andrew mentioned it, I mean, we do think there are some working hazards in the electrical rooms with clearances, just so people can go in there and service that equipment. It's quite tight, quite congested. So we do think that, you know, that it, that should be high on the priority list to get that updated, but, but nothing catastrophic, no.
Fair answer. Thank you.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for allowing me a second bite at this apple. One of the comments that I want to make is that my ward is across from this one and I get a lot of complaints and, and I've spoken to, to those at, at the library about it. The, the facade, it, it needs cleaning, but we can't clean it because the bricks are kind of coming in. I mean, that's something, in, in my opinion, that would be something very important, just at a minimum, something like that. And that would probably need a new facade and so on, more than just, I think, repointing. I think we've gotten past that point.
Yeah, so it's interesting. Jen's mentioned that to us, that, you know, there's been some past input from folks along the way that, you know, if you were to power wash the building, some of the mortar is not strong enough and may deteriorate. That was not our finding. We actually found the masonry and we, sorry, we went through all this very quickly and we didn't like touch on every bullet, but the masonry, the veneer masonry, the brick seems to be very sound. There is some step cracking that needs to be addressed. It's not a huge issue, but it should be addressed to, to prevent further water, water infiltration. But there's some localized repointing, but on a whole, we didn't find that the entire building needs to be repointed. It does need a good bath. It needs a good power washing. You know, there's a lot of organic growth. There's a lot of just grime, for lack of a better word, on the building that could, that could be cleaned. Yeah.
Thank you.
Alderman. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time. Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Dowd. Sorry.
Thank you. Sometimes you get lost on Zoom. You mentioned a lifecycle cost analysis. Have you done any analysis on, on say, like if you're replacing the windows versus the savings in, in energy and what the payback periods are? Have you done any of that?
The, the short answer is no, we have not. But that, you know, we, we recommend that as you move forward in this process, that you look to do that early in the design phases. There's not enough information yet known based, to do that, but that would be something that should be done early in a design process so you, you all can make informed decisions to evaluate exactly what you just said, insulating the roof, insulating, you know, new windows versus overcladding versus, you know, all electric energy use versus gas and electric. Like all those things would be part of a, you know, pretty early discussions in a design process.
Yeah, another would be the cost of replacing the roof versus putting solar on the roof and, and absorbing energy costs over time. The other question I have that I should know the answer to, but I don't, I don't have anything right here is, is this project on the bonding plan?
I don't think it is.
I don't think it is, yeah. So there's a lot of steps to go before, you know, we could get to a point where a actual cost number could be considered. But I do agree with a lot of your findings that there's a lot of things that need some TLC. Question will be, you know, how do we scope the project going forward? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Hey, anyone else? Anyone else on Zoom? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, very much for being here tonight. We enjoyed your presentation. We look forward to seeing this project move along.
Thank you. Our pleasure. And if there are any further questions, feel free to reach out via Jen.
Thank you. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion that the October 25th, 2022 special meeting of the Board of Alderman be adjourned by roll call.
Motion is to adjourn. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Judd.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.[1774.76]